Are you still, like, seeing signs of Courtney joining us?
Um, we talked on the phone and she said she was jumping on, so, um...
Oh, all right.
But no, not on (laugh) not on Zoom yet. We could probably start knowing that she's coming and...
Yeah, let's, uh, let's get started. Okay, I will call the meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. Before we start, uh, just some, some comments here. For the tenth, uh, straight month, we are conducting this meeting, uh, by Zoom, not physically open to the public. Limited staff are present in the council chambers and Planning Commission is participating remotely via video call Zoom. Members of the Planning Commission can use the reaction choices from Zoom to indicate they would like to speak in order to raising a hand. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following a quick rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website and with the Zoom meeting link also available on our website. Our technician tonight is Noel. Public comment can be emailed or called into the Planning Commission. Uh, that should be on your screen right now. Members of the public may submit public comment once for each item by email or phone call. You may not submit more than one email or call per item. The, uh, call-in instructions are on, uh, on your screen, so I'll leave it at that. You will have up to three minutes to speak. Um, if you're watching the meeting by Zoom, you can, the participant option to raise your hand and make a comment when unmuted by our moderator. To email comments, identify the item you wish to comment on in your email subject line. Emailed comments will be accepted starting now up until I announce or the chairman announces the public comment for that item is closed. Each email comment will be read aloud for up to three minutes or displayed on the screen. Emails and calls received outside of the comment period outlined will not be included in the record. So with that, uh, we will now have a roll call. Uh, Commissioner Ruth, here. Commissioner Will, here. Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Christensen, are you with us? Not yet. Uh, Commissioner-to-be, Westman.
Here.
And, and the chair is here. Did I hear from Commissioner, um, Christensen? Not yet. Okay, well, the next, um...
I, I see...
Well, we, next item is the pledge of allegiance. So we will begin. I pledge allegiance to...
Here's the flag.
...by United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under honorable with liberty and justice overall, as it is for all. Justice for all, and that is we're getting better. Uh, the next item is the swearing-in of our new commissioner. Who is going to handle that?
I am. Um...
Is our, um...
I'm here.
Yeah, the commissioner's here, but we need to, need her to be sworn in. Is our development director going to do that?
I am going to have the honor of doing that this evening. Um, Commissioner Westman, if you can raise your hand, right hand, um, and repeat after me. I, Susan West, Westman.
I, Susan Westman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And that I take this obligation freely...
And that I take this obligation freely and without reservation.
Yeah, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Uh, any mental reservation, uh, or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties on which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good, and welcome back publicly, Commissioner Westman.
Thank you.
That is the same pledge without the California part that our former president is being impeached on. You should be aware of that. Okay, the next item of business is a nomination of a new chair and vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'm happy with business as usual. I nominate, uh, Ed Newman.
No, 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 no. I, 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 I really appreciate that, but, uh, I think I can make the nomination, can I not, as chair? Anyone?
Or I can if you want Ed.
Yes, please.
Uh, I nominate Mick Ruth.
And I will second that. Do we have a nomination? Well, I guess we can take them one at a time. Uh, any other nominations? If not, we'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Will?
Approved.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
And the chair to no longer be, uh, votes affirmatively. So, uh, do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Pardon me, Chair Newman?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Will.
Do we have a second?
I'll second him.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Commissioner Will?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So congratulations to both of you, and I will now turn the meeting over to our new chair, Ruth.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Newman. Uh, I'd just also like to welcome Susan back. For those of you in the community that don't know Susan, she's been the Community Development Director, the City Manager, and a former planning commissioner. She brings a wealth of experience to the commission, so, uh, Susan, welcome back.
Thank you for the kind word.
Okay, so that brings us down on our agenda to commission appointments. Okay, so that brings us down on our agenda to commission appointments. Uh, tonight, we have an appointment for the Art and Cultural Commission. Has anyone, uh, thrown their hat in the ring for that particular position, or is there anyone who would like to serve in that capacity?
Chair Ruth, I'd like to bring to your attention that Commissioner Christensen is now on, is on the Zoom and participating.
I'm, I'm sorry. Katie couldn't hear that real well.
Okay, uh, I want to bring to your attention that Commissioner Christensen is on the Zoom and participating.
Okay, so, and we will, uh-
I would like to nominate Commissioner Christensen for that position.
I'll second.
Okay, let, let me remind everybody, when you do make a motion, make a second. Uh, we do have a, a new clerk tonight, and that's Edna Bass, and she's not familiar with everyone, so if you could just state your name, please, when you do make a motion or a second, so she can get that, uh, in the record correctly. So we have a motion by Commissioner Wilk and a second by Commissioner, uh, Westman.
Yes.
To, to appoint, uh, Commissioner Christensen to the Art and Cultural Commission. Uh, may I have the roll call, please? Let's see, Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilks?
Yes.
And Commissioner Christensen, are you there yet?
Yes, I am.
And so it's your turn to vote.
Oh, I vote yes.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. Oh, the chair votes aye also. Okay, that brings us down to oral communications, and the first item under oral communications are additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any, Katie?
Um, I'm unaware of any new, new public comment that has come in. I'm going to look to Sean Sisanto and ask him, are there any additional materials that were received on either application this afternoon?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Um, were there any additional materials received for either of the planning items for this evening's meeting?
No.
From the public? Thank you. No additions or deletions?
Okay, and, uh, so now's the time for public comments that are for, uh, any item or any, anything that's not currently on the agenda. And, uh, so we'll give you, uh, the public a minute or two to, uh, contact the Planning Commission for any items not on the agenda.
At this time, I'm not seeing any public comment received in our, um, emails.
Okay.
And-
Then we will move on. Um, commission comments. Any comments from members of the Planning Commission?
I had a question.
Commissioner Newman?
Uh, this is for the, uh, staff. Um, the property that's next to the freeway is, is sometimes referred to as the Grimes property. Has that had a change of use because, uh, it seems to be completely full of automobiles, which maybe is being used by the car dealerships? I'm not sure.
Yes, um, the Grimes property has been given conditional use permits over the years. It's actually been, the extensions have gone through city council because, um, automedia, automobile storage is not a, it's a use that's not listed within that zone, so therefore it originally got a recommendation from Planning Commission and then approval by city council. For years, you couldn't see it because prior there was the mobile home display in front, but now that the mobile home display is gone, it's more noticeable that there's cars there. They actually just submitted a new application to extend that permit for, um, I believe, uh, either-
Is that a, a year-by-year, um, a permit, or is that the permit?
It's, it's a temporary permit. I think it's due to expire this March. So we did just receive a request for an extension there.
Thank you.
So that, that will return to the city council.
Okay. Any other comments from any commissioners?
This is Commissioner Wilk. I have a comment. So I, I also would personally like to, uh, welcome Commissioner Westman. Uh, it's an honor to serve with a colleague that has such a distinguished resume, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilk. Any other commission comments? And hearing none, we'll go to staff comments. Any comments from the staff, Katie?
Yes, I have a few comments. Uh, first, I'd like to introduce our new deputy city clerk, Edna Bassa. Um, Edna comes to us with lots of experience in both owning a successful small business as well as practicing law. Her background and law decree, degree will serve her well in the deputy clerk position, and her extensive customer service experience make her a pleasure to work with. So, um, I'd like to welcome Edna, and she'll, from here on out, be working with the Planning Commission and taking minutes um, and can do your roll call votes, and, uh, it's a pleasure to have her here with the city, so. Welcome, Edna.
Thank you, Katie. Welcome, Edna.
And I do have other updates. I thought I would share some updates with you now rather than at the end of the meeting, knowing that several members need to recuse themselves, uh, from items. I wanted to report that the city council extended the outdoor dining through May 31st or directed staff during the last city council meeting. So we're working to putting together the documents in order to extend outdoor dining till May 31st. That'll provide the businesses with, um, more clarity in order to make decisions with their businesses and how they want to operate. Also, um, the, we received more money for the, through the CARES Act, through HCD, $330,000, in which the city council is going to be discussing how to allocate those funds at the hearing next week. Um, previously, in the first round of CARES Act money, they put money towards food distribution as well as rental assistance. Um, during the earlier discussions, they were hoping to use round two towards economic development and small business grants to possibly cover rental expenses, um, and utilities. So we'll be having a public hearing next week, followed by a resolution at the following meeting, uh, depending on how the city council decides to direct staff to uh, utilize that money. I also wanted to bring you up to date on 401 Capitola Avenue across from City Hall. They have removed the um, items that were out of compliance, and now they've, uh, brought in the, um, they followed their building permit and have built the screening, um, as, as approved. They've, they've let us know that instead of Boba tea, they'll be selling kombucha, which is okay under that to-go, um, permit. And the last update is that, um, I've still been in continued discussions with PG&E about the tree on Cherry Avenue. At this point, um, I have no, we do not have a complete application. It's pending, um, an arborist report, and so I'll be keeping you up to date on that. And one other thing is there was an article in the newspaper about these great new food trucks that are at the mall, and, um, businesses are allowed to have food trucks up to four times a year with an administrative permit, but if they're a, if, if they're a long-term food, food truck, um, program, they need to come into City Hall and get a conditional use permit. So the uh, manager of the mall felt awful that he didn't realize they needed a permit, and today we worked with them to resolve that, so that's something you'll be seeing at your next Planning Commission meeting, and, uh, they want to bring that into compliance and are holding off on allowing them to operate further until they have their permit, so. Those are the updates for this evening. Thank you.
Uh, question? This is Commissioner Wilk. Is anybody else having trouble hearing, Katie?
Yes.
Someone, someone's tapping on a keyboard, which doesn't help, but you're very muffled.
Oh, um-
Yeah, I, I'm having a very difficult time hearing you.
Okay. You know, um, and I'm, I wonder if it's our setup, but can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Is that less muffled?
Yes.
Would you like me to restate the updates, or?
No, I could hear you. It just was very difficult.
Okay, I'll try to speak closer to the mic. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for staff regarding the comments? And hearing none, that brings us to the consent calendar, or I'm sorry, the approval of minutes. Uh, is it the Planning Commission minutes from the meeting of December 3rd? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes by any commissioner?
I will move approval. This is Commissioner Newman.
Commissioner Wilk will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Edna, are you calling the roll call?
Oh, yes, I will.
Oh, yes, I will.
That's not working. Okay, I'll call the roll call.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilks?
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman? Commissioner Westman? You may have to unmute yourself.
Obst, uh, abstain.
Okay, and Commissioner Ruth votes aye. Okay, that brings us now to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the Planning Commission votes on the action, unless members of the public or the Planning Commission request specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items polled for separate discussion will be considered in the order listed on the agenda. Does anyone on the commission want to pull this item for discussion?
Mr. Newman.
Commissioner Wilk, or Commissioner Newman?
Uh, I, um, need to recuse myself from this item as well as the uh, pu- public hearing item, 4630 Capitola Road. In both cases, it's due to, uh, having property within the 500-foot, uh, limit, so those are the only two items on the agenda, so I will be just watching this, and it will be no longer part of the meeting, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Newman.
Commissioner Wilk? I also have to recuse myself from the consent item only. Uh, due to proximity.
Okay. So that will be Commissioner Christensen, Westman, and myself, uh, voting on this item. Are we getting any contact on this item from the public, Katie?
Um-
Hello?
Hello? Sorry. We, we have one, can you hear me? We have ones, um, Zoom, we've got three Zoom attendees. None of them have their hand up at this time. Let me, oh, now we have a hand up, so would you allow, like to, we do have public comment on this first item for 114A Stockton.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, shall we give a, a brief overview of the application, and then we'll take public comment?
Do we have a member of the public going to make a comment, or is it an email?
They want to make a comment. So typically, when we have a, a member of the public who would like to make a comment, we can, we can provide a, a quick staff presentation or overview of the application and then go to public hearing.
Okay.
And pull it off consent.
Right. So Chair Ruth, uh, members of the Planning Commission, uh, Sean, you can get a next slide, thanks. Uh, the applicant is proposing to construct a new residential lift for an existing mixed-use structure located at 114A Stockton Avenue within the Central Village zoning district. Uh, the proposed development complies with all the development standards of the zoning district. Next slide. Lot is located on Stockton Avenue in Central Village neighborhood, surrounded by, uh, lots with one- and two-story commercial and mixed-use structures. 114A Stockton, uh, is a mixed-use building with the Fandra Swimwear Retail Store on the first story and existing residence, uh, the second story. There's a mural of Capitola on the side of the structure as shown here. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the proposed site plan. Uh, the proposed residential lift is located behind the structure, not visible from the street, uh, and it's shown in the blue oval here. Next slide, please. These are the proposed floor plans for just the stairway and lift area. Uh, applicant is proposing a new residential lift at the rear of the structure adjacent to the existing external stairs to provide greater accessibility to the upstairs residential unit. Uh, it's a mention for the lift's not visible from the street, um, nor the side of the building where the parking, uh, is accessed. Next slide, please. So this is the existing southwest and northwest elevations. Next slide, please. And then here are the proposed elevations with the lift, the small shed roof, um, and then a little bridge over to the base of the lift. Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends planning commission approve the project based on the commission's approval and findings.
Thank you, Matt. So now that brings us to the public comments.
Okay, um-
Katie, is the, is the, do we have a member of the public wanting to participate?
Yes, um, I'm trying to unmute them. I'm going to, uh, promote them to a panelist so they can, let's see if I can unmute. Um, the member of the public, um, if you could unmute, you're able to speak now regarding this application. Okay, uh, I'm going to promote them to a panelist so that they can make public comment. And... The member of the public-
Are they still waiting?
You know, they're, um, they're muted and now unable to, to speak, and I, I don't have the ability to unmute them. So the member of the public-
We'll give them a few more, a few more seconds to figure it out.
Okay.
Maybe they're waiting to be unmuted, because that's what the instructions say on the screen.
So I, I pressed allow to talk, and it looks like they're still muted. I'm going to ask them to unmute.
Okay, well, I think we may have to move on, so here we go.
No, so the way in which to make public comment would either be through, through unmuting. You can press your spacebar to unmute. If you hold down the spacebar, we'll be able to hear you. No, their, their mute is still on, so I apologize.
Okay, well, okay, well, I think we're going to have to proceed then. Are there any comments, questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I, I move to approve. And Commissioner Christensen moved to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Susan Westman, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application at 114A Stockton Avenue. Um, roll call, uh, Ms. Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ruth votes aye. So the motion carries and the application is approved. Hey, that brings us to public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is 4630 Capitola Road, and I will have to recuse myself from this one because I live within 500 feet, so I will turn this item over to Commissioner Wilk.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman, Chairman Ruth. Um, I have never chaired-
I have never chaired this before, so we are now on 4630 Capitol Road, and the status is, I guess first we'll ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilk, and good evening, commissioners. The item before you is an appeal of an administrative denial of a tree removal permit to remove a DEDAR cedar tree near an existing single-family residence in the Commercial Residential Zoning District. This evening, staff will describe the tree removal application process and present the appeal, since we don't typically get that many appeals. And next, the applicant will be given the opportunity to speak and answer any Planning Commission questions. The chair will then open the public portion of this hearing, and that will be followed by Planning Commission discussion and decision. Most tree removal permits are reviewed and approved at the staff level, indicated by the track on the left. They begin typically with a preliminary review of public work staff, who can approve the removal of a non-heritage tree only if the findings for removal contained within Section 12180 are made. If findings cannot be made, the application is transferred to planning staff for further review. The city may require the applicant to pay for an arborist support under contract of the city for that tree. The community development director will then make a determination based on those findings and recommendations. As noted in the staff report, the pre-application was submitted with an arborist report, which was reviewed as a part of this staff-level review. The city received an appeal on December 2nd, 2020 for this review. The tree proposed for removal is a DEDAR cedar located in the front yard of 4630 Capitol Road, approximately 25 feet from the public right-of-way. The tree is four feet in diameter and estimated to be 80 feet tall, with a significant canopy spread over the subject property and the adjacent property at 4610 Capitol Road. The tree is not a heritage tree, and it is also not located in an environmentally sensitive habitat area. In 2005, the tree experienced a series of branch failures, as shown on the right. In 2017, the tree experienced further branch failure, as seen in the two photos on the left. The failures caused damage to a boundary fence and a neighboring vehicle. For either the community development director or Planning Commission to approve the removal of a non-heritage tree, the same review process applies. At least one finding of poor removal must be made, and there must be no feasible alternatives to that removal. The findings, which include the health of the tree, safety considerations, and property damage, are shown here. They will be addressed individually in the following slides. First criterion considers the health or condition of the tree with respect to disease, infestation, or danger of falling. Public work staff and the arborists consider the tree to be in good health and growth, and that the failure risk of the whole tree was very low. Based on the assessment, staff could not make findings of removal from the health or conditions of this tree. The second consideration is safety. The arborists provided detailed recommendations that would significantly reduce risk of limb failure. Based on the ability to mitigate future risk of branch failure through proper maintenance, staff could not make a finding of removal for safety considerations. The third consideration for removal is for situations where a tree has caused or has the potential to cause unreasonable property damage and/or interference with existing utility services. The cedar tree has caused property damage in the past. However, the recommended mitigation measures identified in the arborist report have not been taken. Based on the ability to mitigate future risk of branch failure through the maintenance, staff could not make a finding of removal for a tree that has caused or has the potential to cause unreasonable property damage. The fourth consideration is that all possible and feasible alternatives to removal have been evaluated, including but not limited to undergrounding of utilities, selective root cutting, trimming, and relocation. This finding must be made in conjunction with one of the previous findings for removal. Based on the alternative described in the arborist report, staff could not make a finding that no feasible alternatives exist, and therefore deny the permit. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the staff denial of a tree removal application, and also approve the pruning and cabling measures established in the arborist report for 4630 Capitol Road.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any questions by the commissioners of staff?
No. I'll wait and hear from the public first.
Okay, do we have an applicant who wants to speak on this?
We do. I will allow Mark.
Isn't that the next step?
Mark Vincent, you should be able to speak now to the commission.
I believe I might be unmuted now.
We can hear you.
Great. Good evening to all members of the Planning Commission. Thanks for giving me some consideration here. I like my picture there of that wave, I think is what it is there. I just wanted to bring up to the commission that my 89-year-old father lives in this home, and I care for him pretty much full-time with the help of a caregiver. And the history of the tree has caused extensive damage to my property and to the neighbor's property, and I'm just concerned with every time there's a wind event like we had the other day that I might have some sort of limb failures. And over the course of time, the tree has been maintained, and I went so far as to request an arborist report just for some ideas and suggest some mitigations in the event that I was not allowed to remove the tree. And I think that I wanted to point out, in the report we created, he says that the DEDAR cedar has a poor structural condition throughout, and that really that removal is the only means available to entirely abate any hazards from limb failure. So I feel that I meet some of the criteria for removal. And he also, in the report, discusses some limitations to his mitigations in that, you know, the recommendations in the report for structural pruning work, encabling, and installation of support systems are intended just to reduce the risk of tree failure, but the recommendations must never be considered guarantees against limb failure events ever occurring. Trees fall, we know that. And I just want to protect the property and mostly the lives of those that are most affected by it, and that's 4610, my neighbor, who's been patient and good with the incidents that have happened in the past, and with myself and my property and my father who's here. And I just ask that you please consider my appeal. And I'm open to any questions.
Are there any questions of the applicant from staff or the commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Are there any public comments?
There is. We have public comment from Zoom user, and I've just allowed them to speak. You may speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Don Enos. I live next door to this property, and I've lived across the street from this property for over 40 years. I've witnessed the wind that has caused problems for this tree, and it totaled the truck the last time to the tune of $4,000. And the time before that, it was actually the same vehicle got smashed and cost $2,000-plus. And the house that I live in, the gutters have had to be replaced because of the pine needles that come down, but that's not the issue there. The last time the tree failed, the limb hit 20 feet from the bedroom that I was sleeping in. That was a couple of years ago. I think about almost this month in February when we had that really significant wind. And I just feel really unsafe in this house because of that tree. And the tree, if you look at it, which I have every day, it has very strange limbs that come out of the, like, 10 feet up. They come straight out to the side and then they go up. And these are huge limbs, and that's why it's failed. You can see where the limbs have broken off in the past, and the scars where these limbs have broken off. The last one stretched through the fence, hit the house here, totaled the truck, and made it to the second vehicle in almost the next property. It was within two feet of the next property. I just feel like this tree is so dangerous. I can't express that enough. I feel like it's a matter of time before something bad happens. I have nothing against trees, it's a beautiful tree. I just think it's so close to these properties. It's like right in Mark's front yard, and it's 20 feet... Well, actually, it's five feet from the property line. It's about 20 feet from my bedroom. I just feel like it's an accident waiting to happen. That's about all I can say. I think it's a danger to life a limb, that's all I got to say. I think it could happen, and it could have happened the other day. I feel like it's a matter of time, and I hope you guys consider the danger. That's my main concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Enos. Are there any other public comments?
There's no more public comments from Zoom, and also there are no more public comments in our email.
Okay, so are we ready to turn it to the commissioner? Commission for comments?
Yes, I think you can...
I'm happy to let Courtney go first, and this is my first meeting.
Courtney, do you have any comments on this or questions or opinions?
I do. I feel pretty strongly that... I mean, listening to the homeowner... I've seen different matters like this over the last couple of years in my experience with the commission, that trees come up that we're not allowing to be removed. And it seems to me, from just looking at the staff report, that I know that there weren't findings that staff could, you know, pinpoint that identified danger to the property, that, you know, people around there. But I just, every time I see those pictures of large branches falling on cars or falling within people's property, I know that if it was my property, I would want that tree removed. It's not particularly attractive. It's a large, huge tree. It's not... I mean, it just seems that it's overbearing all of the adjacent property around there. So, I mean, I know that it would be a stretch to find the findings if this is the conclusion, but I'm open to... I'm wondering how other people feel, because I've seen a couple of these, and I just don't... I'm not comfortable denying a property owner, especially with a tree that's that far into their parcel. You know, I just don't feel that it's right to not let him take care of that problem. And I understand mitigation and arborist report, but it's just, I don't know. I just don't feel that it's right.
Thank you, Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Westman, did you have some comments?
I did. I agree. I think trees are probably one of the most difficult situations that, you know, the Planning Commission's asked to deal with, partly because what we're going... If we ask him to keep the tree, then we're going to ask him to spend a significant amount of money as far as pruning the tree and doing the maintenance work that the arborist requires. On the other hand, if he's going to take out the tree, he again is going to have to spend a significant amount of money to take out the tree. And not being a tree expert myself, I do think that I have to rely on what the arborist said in his report, and that is that the issue of the falling winds can be mitigated if the tree is properly pruned and cabled. And so it sort of went back and forth, shouldn't, you know, the tree just go away because it's a hazard? But then I say, no, it's not really a hazard because if the work is done on it that the arborist talks about, then the tree would be safe and be able to be an asset to the community. When you drive down that area, it is one of the larger trees that sort of stands out on Capitol Road. So after, you know, trying to give consideration to Mr. Vincent's request and what the arborist said, I came down on the side that if they did the work that the arborist required, the tree would be safe. You know, no one's going to say a limb can't fall off a tree ever again because that's just not something anyone can guarantee. But the tree is an asset to that block and that community, so I would like to see them save the tree and do the required work to make it safe.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Westman. I also have some comments. And so I try to use the code, which has got 16 pages of tree ordinances in it, and use that as a guide. But I've spent a lot of time with staff on this, and we both agree that the code is in badly need of revision. For example, we've got heritage trees, but they don't exist because we're not... It's prohibitive to actually create a heritage tree list. We have a community tree fund, though, we're not allowed to spend it. We have a requirement for 15% canopy coverage as a goal, except when it's 30%. And finally, we have this two-for-one tree replacement item, which is often very impractical. So I'm not as wedded to the code as I might have been if it was a little bit... If it gave me better guidance. So then where do you go? You go to precedent. And it turns out that last year, we had this almost exact same issue come up at 1649th Street. A large tree with falling branches on neighbors and on homeowners' property. It was a safety issue. The arborist says, no, it's salvageable if you just do it right. And in that case, we voted in a split commission to save the tree because we believed our arborist, that, yes, we'll salvage it. Unfortunately, they... Well, or fortunately. In any case, the point is that it was appealed to City Council. City Council overturned the Planning Commission because they said, no, safety is paramount. And I take that as a schooling for my opinion. And if the safety is paramount, this is just big a safety issue as the issue on 1649th Street. So I don't want to have this go to City Council and have them overturn us because of us trying to interpret a very messy municipal code. So I approve the notion of approving this appeal. It is his property, after all. We should give him the benefit of the doubt. But beyond that, I think because it was stated in the... But beyond that, I think because it was stated in the, in the directive report that even if he removed this tree entirely, he still has 15% coverage, that the condition of him replac, replacing the tree with two additional trees could be either removed or replaced with just a single tree in order to get the 30% coverage. So not only am I, in approval of the, the application for, for tree removal, but I, I would also be, would entertain some modifications to the conditions. So with that, I guess I'm ready to hear a motion.
I would, I would move, I, I agree, this is Commissioner Christensen. I would move, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with the added conditions, like Chair Wilk was saying, that we replace it with a more suitable tree of his choosing.
A single tree or two trees?
Single tree.
Do we have a second? Well, the, the chair will second it, since there's only three of us. So can we have a roll, any further comments or discussion on the, on the, on the, on the meeting, whatever we just called this thing, proposal? Motion, motion is the term. Need further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, let's call for a roll call vote. Could we have a, a, a rebut of the motion from staff?
Yes, I heard the motion was to uphold the appeal and so grant the tree removal, and by Commissioner Christensen, seconded by Chair Wilk. And we'll-
The condition of-
With the condition of a replacement of one tree.
Replacing the tree with one, not two trees.
Correct.
Correct.
And would you like a roll call?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Any other issues before I call for a vote?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner, yes, for your motion.
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry for my confusion, I'm new at this. Commissioner Westman?
No.
Commissioner Wilk says aye. Motion, the permit is approved, staff recommendation is denied, the motion is approved, two-to-one margin. And with that, let me turn this back over to our chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilk. Well, we're just about wrapped up here. We've had our director's report, and are there any communications from any commissioner? Seeing none, then I believe we can adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting in February. Thank you, commissioners, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.